Evening folks, it's now 7:00 PM and the special session of the Lancaster Planning Commission is now in session. The invocation tonight will be offered by Mr. Burkey. The pledge will be led by Vice Chair Smith. If you'd please stand.
Father, we're so thankful, Lord, that you would allow us to be here tonight. We're thankful for the place we get to live and the place we get to have our leisure activity. I pray, Father, that you would be with us tonight. Give us wisdom from on high, Lord. We pray, Lord, that your will would be done tonight. I pray, Father, that we'd work together as a community, as a commission and staff and a people, Lord, to work towards one common goal, and that is just a great community that you could bless. And, Father, we thank you for all you've done in the past. We look forward to seeing what you're going to do tonight and in the future. And these things I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join me for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic which exists, our nation, our God, and the invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can have the roll call, please.
Commissioners Larry Burkey.
Yes.
Jonathan Irvin.
Here.
Dana Haycock.
Here.
Dan Jacobs.
Here.
Raj Malley.
Here.
Vice Chair Sandy Smith.
Here.
Chairman James Vos.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Any person who would like to address the commission is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary. There's some here at the front table and there's some in back. Speaker cards, excuse me, individual speakers are limited to two minutes in this pre-meeting time. Once we get into public hearings, then individual speakers are allowed three minutes. So is there anyone who wishes to speak in advance?
Mr. Chairman, we have had a request of one person to speak in advance, and that would be Nicole Parsons.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Parsons?
Hello. Hi. I thought some of my, the names in the general plans, the old general plans, and, but I think you guys, it was me, but I think you guys put my name wrong, it's Nicole Stetson. And so what I'm saying is that I met every deadline that I've done so far, and, which the last one I did was the DWP, and, and so, and so, water, it needs a different structure, but I found out, but there's like a lot of things about water, but I want to talk about sacrifice and a couple of movies that I've seen, I read Sacrifice, Terminator, and War Games, and, and then, in, well, the ground, in my studies, I realized that there's the watershed and the hydrology, so that we don't, we can't like really put, LA is bound because they have all the cement. And so, so one of my original developments, it's like to the, like for this, it's basically we put a cobblestone walkways, but we can't cover the ground for, and actually, the development, but if you guys would like, I could promise, what is it called, per capita, instead of sending the recycled water to this district, which is still the downtown district, per capita, I know you guys can't vote on it or anything right now, but per capita, I could promise there would be no raise in per capita use with the developments right here, with the, with the downtown developments. If you guys wanted to, because the design money, Lancaster, I think the design money's here, and no one actually has a design, but we have to, because on global warming, it's really serious, AB 32, we have to sacrifice, okay, in the fifth element, the last element was, was love. Okay, I get more time. And, and that's the only way that we're going to be able to change it, because in War Games, it was the machines, and then they didn't know how to lose, and the, and the rest, sacrifice, you had to sacrifice something. And in Terminator, and then, so, this is metal, wood, coal still, burning wood, and then you have people. Walmart is gonna, Walmart is gonna build anywhere. This one, this one place, you don't have to build it there.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons, your time's expired.
And that's AB 32, and we have to take 30, global warming, serious, if we're gonna take, cut it out, fix it.
Time has expired. Please take your seat. Thank you. Thank you. Do you have any other pre-speakers there?
None others have requested, Mr. Chairman.
A big pardon?
None others have requested.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the general plan update. Before us this evening is a recommendation to the City Council for certification of the final environmental impact report, and the master environmental assessment, the adoption of environmental findings, the adoption of a statement of overriding conditions, the adoption of a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and the adoption of the general plan update that encompasses the entire city. I would point out that the commission this last week and up to and including five minutes before the meeting started have received a number of correspondence. We received three letters that were distributed to the commission in our distribution this last week. We've received a document called Concept A, however, it's not identified by project. Well, it is by Street 40th West and K on the west side. We received a correspondence regarding a property owned by Dr. Kumar, and various letters of communication, and we received a request SP on assessment parcel number 3267, page 11, parcels 2 and 3. So those are the latest communications, other than the three additional items that we received that I mentioned earlier. And we will be considering those correspondence after the, at the close of the public hearing. So without objection, the public hearing is open on the general plan update, and we'll hear a staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Last member's location.
Thank you, John. What I'd like to do tonight is give you a brief overview of the general plan program. The staff report that has been prepared contains a rather in-depth overview of the general plan program from inception to where we are tonight. I just want to touch on some of the aspects of that that I believe are important to bring to the public hearing at this time. Before I do that, I wanted to go over with you the packet materials that you have, that were submitted to you for the meeting tonight. First of all, you have in your materials a CD that contains the, the final master environmental assessment, public review, draft, EIR, and the technical appendices. That's this item here. And you have the staff report, which includes Resolution Number 09-12. To that resolution are attached four exhibits. Exhibit A being the findings that you mentioned. Exhibit B being the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the program environmental impact report. Exhibit C being the addendum to the June 2008 general plan policy document. This particular version of the addendum, because we've had other versions before tonight, is, has the date of tonight's meeting, May 5th, or May 11th, 2009. And finally, Exhibit D is the Planning Commission land use recommendation map. Also included in your materials, as the chairman mentioned, are three additional request letters and an updated request letter summary log with staff recommendations. These three letters have been included in the summary log. Staff has reviewed these three letters, and we have given our recommendations for those three requests, and I will go over each of those a little bit later on in the presentation. Excuse me. What I'd like to do, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, was go through just some of the highlights of the general plan program, because we are at a very important junction of the, juncture of the program tonight. Tonight, you do have the, all the documentation available to you to make a recommendation to the City Council for certification of the final environmental impact report and adoption of the general plan program. So again, I just wanted to touch on the highlights. Like in 2000, early 2006, we started a citywide community outreach program. This is a very extensive program that went throughout most of 2006. Two important highlights of that, of that particular effort were, first of all, the visioning workshops that occurred during July, and also, the, out of those workshops came the visioning priorities, which we have reviewed during the special meetings that we've had in the past. Those visioning priorities were the foundation for the community-based general plan that is being presented to you tonight. The outreach program was followed in early 2007 by the formation of the General Plan Citizens Advisory Committee. The General Plan Citizens Advisory Committee met through most of 2007, monthly meetings, held monthly meetings, and during that time, they reviewed the goals and objectives of the policy document. They worked on developing land use alternatives, which we have presented to you, and they finally came up with a preferred plan recommendation, which you've had the opportunity to also review. In addition, during that time, we also held, I believe in April of 2007, a series of land use workshops, land use alternative workshops, in which the public was invited to input into the process. Following the general plan recommendation from the G-PAC, staff and the consultant commenced on preparation of the environmental, program environmental impact report for the general plan. Held a public scoping meeting in November of 2007, and conducted a 60-day review period of the draft document when it was released. We held a public hearing before the Planning Commission in January of 2009 to receive public comment. The EIR analyzed three alternatives, the no project alternative, which is the current adopted general plan, the balanced growth alternative, and the G-PAC preferred plan, where the three alternatives identified are analyzed by the program environmental impact report. And out of that process, the preferred plan was considered to be the environmentally superior alternative of the three. Between September and April, September 2008 and April 2009, we held 11 special meetings with the Planning Commission to discuss in depth each of the draft general plan documents. We received public testimony over those special meetings regarding these draft documents. The commission has considered around 69, more than that now, but approximately 69, 70 individual land use requests that we received from the public, and incorporated that into the review process, discussed at length the policies and programs of the general plan, received staff's recommendation for the general plan land use map, and finally compiled a Planning Commission land use recommendation, which I will review tonight for you. What I'd like to do is just briefly discuss the draft documents that make up the general plan. Those are contained actually on page 3 of the staff report, and I'll go through those. These are, this is the set of documents that constitutes the draft general plan. First of all is the findings, in fact, supporting the general plan update and the program environmental impact report, which is contained, as I mentioned earlier, as exhibit A of the resolution. Then is the mitigation monitoring program, which is contained as exhibit B of the attached resolution. That's the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the program environmental impact report. And then there is the June 2008 draft policy document, which, as I mentioned, includes the May 11th, 2009 addendum, the draft general plan land use map, known as the Planning Commission land use recommendation, also dated May 11th, 2009, and attached as exhibit D to the resolution, the final master environmental assessment, and the final program environmental impact report. Those documents make up the program, or the general plan program. The one document that's not included in these materials is the housing element. The housing element is part of the general plan, however, it is currently being reviewed by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and once they have completed that review, we will return that document to your attention. So that, that reference to that is not included in the resolution tonight. What I'd like to do now is, if we go to the microphone up here, find the, is go through the, and what we've done is we've done a side-by-side comparison, like we did similarly a couple of months ago for the staff recommendation. We prepared, compared the, the G-PAC preferred plan with the staff recommendation. We've done the same thing with the, the Planning Commission recommendation, but compared it to the existing plan. Now, what I want to do tonight is not necessarily go through, if I can make this anywhere. How about, trying to do this manually this time. What I, what we prepared, what I wanted to mention is that I did not want to go back and go through all of them, because we did a very detailed analysis of the staff recommendation a couple of months back, and showed the differences between staff's recommendation and the, and the G-PAC preferred plan. What you're going to see is the existing general plan and the Planning Commission land use recommendation, with all of those other changes incorporated. In other words, we're starting with the G-PAC base, the preferred plan is a base, and then staff recommendations, and then on top of that, the Planning Commission recommendations that affected the final outcome of the map, and that's what you'll see here. You have a copy of, this is the adopted general plan, just for reference. Go to the next slide. You have in your packet materials a slightly larger version than the eight and a half by 11 of the, of the general plan recommendation that's contained in your packet materials, and that's this, this is the land use recommendation here. Go ahead to the next one, John. Okay, this is the west, and again, we broke into some of the same areas that we did before with the staff recommendation. This is the west Lancaster area, from 40th Street West to 80th Street West, and from Avenue H to Avenue N, and the one recommendation, let me get my. The one, the one change that occurred beyond the staff recommendation on this particular area was the addition of the buffer along 50th Street West between Avenue I and Avenue J. And it's a quarter-mile buffer, and that was added at the request of the Planning Commission. And in that particular area, that is the only difference between the, the only change that occurred. Just, John, the next slide. This is the central Lancaster area, from Avenue H to Avenue M, and from 40th Street West to Division, and the one modification that occurred in this area was right here, around the hospital, on the, on the north, and north side of Avenue J, the Planning Commission modified staff's recommendation for office professional designation along this area of the north side of Avenue J, added this particular area here into that recommendation as also office professional. And then, the other modification, and this we, this pertains to the southeast corner of J8 and 30th Street East. When we left off at the last meeting, the direction that staff was given is to come back with a recommendation for that particular location. Commercial was not on the part of the commission acceptable for that, that particular location. Staff is recommending for that location an MR1 designation, moderate density residential. And that really, that is the modifications that differ from the staff recommendation with regard to the general plan map. Those are the three areas that were modified by the Planning Commission to produce this particular version of the map.
Before you proceed, Dave, any questions from anyone? Anything so far? Okay. Go ahead, proceed, Dave.
Okay. I just go ahead and go through, there's really no other changes here. And then just wanted to just briefly mention that this, this particular slide shows the difference, the adjustments in acreages between the existing general plan and the Planning Commission land use recommendation, and you can see where, where, and this shows each land use category on the general plan. And by looking at this, you can see that the major, major adjustment that was done to the general plan, the difference between the existing general plan and, and the current recommendation, is, is the addition of the mixed, mixed-use land use category. And that's really where the biggest change occurred, and you can see where most of the negative numbers were drawn from, you know, those are the areas that, that, that the land users were drawn from to create the mixed use designation. So really, that is the major, the most significant change in creating the new general plan for the city. Okay. I wanted to just bring to your attention the three land use request letters. Review those very quickly here. Get that out. We have those listed as, first of all, as a letter from the Desert Vineyard Church, and I apologize, we're going to have actually assessor's maps up here on each of these tonight, but we ran into some technical difficulties and weren't able to get that into the PowerPoint presentation, so I'll just, I'll describe these. First request letter, which is labeled as B7A, your packet material should have assessor's maps within that shows what's being requested. This is a request to redesignate about a half an acre, a little over half an acre of the Desert Vineyard Church property from the current designation of urban residential to LI. And this little piece is, if you're looking at your assessor's map, it's kind of up in the northeastern area of the property, and the area directly below that is already designated as light industrial. So staff agrees with, with the proponent here that this would make a more uniform designation by converting this to LI, so we are recommending that support for that And then, the second item we have listed is item C9A, and that's Hills View Homes Incorporated. And that's located on the northwest corner of 30th Street East and Avenue J8. We are recommending denial of this request, because we, particularly because the Planning Commission has already recommended 10 acres, and it supports 10 acres of commercial at Avenue J and 30th Street East, and staff concurs with the PC's recommendation that commercial is not appropriate, and we also feel that commercial is not appropriate at Avenue J and 30th Street East. So we're recommending denial of that particular request. And then item C15B, approximately 10 acres located on the northeast corner of 30th Street West and Avenue M, and the proponent is asking, the current designation for that property is non-urban residential, and the proponent is asking for that to be changed to office professional. Staff is recommending denial of that request. The letter is indicating that, that the applicant would like to build a temple on the side, and an office professional designation is not necessary to do that. You can build that type of facility in that zone with approval of a conditional use permit, so the land use change is really not viewed as necessary, so we're recommending denial of that. We had one other one here that came in tonight, or maybe others. This one is for, looks like about 120 acres, on the southeast corner of Avenue J and 110th Street West, and I don't have a lot of information on this, and maybe Brian can fill in some of the details here, but there's a request for a specific plan to over- overlay that area. No, no land use change, it's just, this would be non-urban residential within that area. It's an new designation.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yes, in, in going through the speaker's cards, there is a person who has requested to speak on this item. I think staff would withhold any comment until that has occurred, if there are questions from the commission.
All right, thank you.
And other than that, where staff is recommending that, that you approve Resolution 90-12, recommend it to the City Council, certification of the final environmental impact report, and adoption of general plan program. That concludes my staff report, and I'll turn it back to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter, and on behalf of the commission, and we want to commend you for all your hard work and effort putting this final document together from the years of work that you've put into it, you and your support staff, and, and certainly Mr. Ludeke, and with his supervision, we've, we've massaged this thing for 11 meetings, 12 meetings?
Twelve, yeah, 12 with tonight, counting tonight.
And my guess is from the stack of yellow cards, we're going to hear some more from some of the property owners in public tonight relative to the adoption of this document before us. So before the commission deliberates, we are in public hearing, and we will hear all those who have filled out speaker's cards relative to the subject before us, which Mr. Ledbetter just reviewed. So, Mr., if there are no questions or comments from the members, then we'll hear the first speaker, please.
Mr. Chairman, just have one other comment if I could. I'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't. We have with us tonight Susan Harden from RBF. Susan's been instrumental. She's the program project manager for the general plan for RBF, has been very instrumental throughout the program, particularly in the outreach programs, and with a formulation of a, a number of, of a very thorough and, um, successful applications with the planning, general plan citizens advisory committee, so just wanted to recognize her tonight.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your work. If we could proceed, please.
I apologize if I mispronounce names. Chris Benkatapa?
Just as a reminder, there's a three-minute time limit, and at two and a half, or two and a half minutes, it'll give you a yellow light and then a red light at the end of three minutes, and we'd appreciate your concluding your remarks within the three-minute timeframe.
Thank you, sir.
Please proceed. Thank you, and welcome.
I am from the Indian community. I'm the vice president of the Indian Cultural Association. They're very happy to hear the application made by Dr. Kumar. It's a long-awaited thing that everyone needs it. Our Hindu community is here in this area for more than 30 years, and we don't have a place to worship. We were all excited when we heard that an application has been made to the commission, and we need it. We request you to give a favorable consideration and help us to have a center over here. One time he asked me to find if there is any church available. I called for the list, there were 122 churches, but we were not able to buy anything. But unfortunately, there is not a single temple in this area. Many people, when, when they migrate into this area, the first question they ask is, a Hindu community, do you have a temple? The second thing is, how is the educational system? So these are the basic things, and the temple is a must for the community. I request the commission to give a favorable consideration and help the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions?
Well, I do, I do have a comment and a clarification. From what I understand, from what Mr. Ledbetter said, this project, the reason it's being denied as a land use change is because under the conditional, or, under the current land use map, you are allowed to apply for a conditional use permit to erect a temple. Is that correct? So we don't need to change the, so it would be a different, it would be a different process, really, than, than the, the general plan revision. It would be submitting that project for consideration of the Planning Commission for a conditional use permit. Do you understand that?
Yeah, that will help us. A conditional use permit is okay.
So by us denying, if, if we deny the change in the land use, I don't know if we will or not, that the change, that does not mean that you can't move forward and, and go through the, the regular process of applying for a conditional use permit to put a temple there. Do you understand that? Maybe I'm talking in some...
You need, you need one more application to be made, a conditional use permit.
Right, I think you would work with, with the planning department to go through a different process than the process that we're going through tonight, because we do not need to change that land use in order for you to move forward.
Okay.
Because the, the current land use is okay to move forward on, on applying.
For a conditional use permit.
For the conditional use permit, correct?
That will help us. Thank you.
So, so I, from what I understood, from them saying, we, we're denying it because there's no need to change that for you to, to ask for that.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
That's a great help.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't want you to think that that's going to shut down all of your plans. Like, there's a different process that you would, you would take.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One, one other comment is, for further clarification, if this were changed to office professional, the process would still be the same, there, there would still need to be a CPU, correct?
Actually, Commissioner Burkey, we're looking at that issue right now, something that, that I hadn't, hadn't considered, and I, I think there are other speakers who may provide some clarification on what exactly the nature of this request is. Sylvia Donovan is checking. I'm not sure churches are permitted in an office professional zone, so, so there, there may be an issue with that also.
So you're saying if it were changed to office professional, it could actually hinder the building of the temple?
On, on a portion of the property that were to be so zoned or designated, yes.
Sylvia is coming up with that answer tonight.
So they would be better off leaving it as it is, if that's the use that they're desiring, correct?
Um, if, if their intent is to use portions of the site that they would redesignate or ask to redesignate to that, yes, that could be, that could be problematic. Next speaker.
I just, I just would point out, before we have the next speaker, the, the request before us on C15B is for a change of two parcels totaling approximately 10 acres to office professional. So that's, that's the writing we had received, which you based your staff recommendation on, right? Okay.
Chairman, boss.
Hope there's any correction or change to that. We may hear about it. Go ahead, Ms. Thomas.
Churches are not allowed in the office professional. They're not permitted, and they're not subject to CUP as well.
All right. So, so the, the staff report then, and recommendation on C15B is to deny, and based on the use proposed, they couldn't even do it with a conditional use permit, right? Could not do it with a conditional use permit?
That's right, they could not.
But the existing zoning would allow them to file for a conditional use permit?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Let's hear from the next speaker then.
Dr. Kumar.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for listening to me. About three weeks ago, I went to the city requesting ideas or information about how I could use this piece of land that my family and I have owned for about eight, 10 years for the purposes of building a Hindu temple. I found out that the commission was way into making the general plan, that it was so late in the process that there would not be chance for us to have the staff review it thoroughly and present it to you folks. I said, could I take a chance of going in front of the, the commission and requesting? And they said, yes, I could do that. That's where I come from. So in the last three weeks, we frantically tried to put together a small presentation to you, and several of my Hindu friends are here. The reason for asking for the change, and I, I'm not aware of all the subtleties of what allows what and what does not, the primary purpose is to build a Hindu temple on one of those two parcels of land that we have on the west side. The reason for asking for the change in designation was that the Hindu community in town is pretty If a temple is built, which itself would be a formidable financial and logistical challenge, sustaining it over two years or 20 years or 200 years would require some kind of a source of income. And my plan was, or proposal was, to build a s, office building in the adjacent piece of land, these are large pieces, where a certain amount of income would help run the, the temple. It would not be a huge office building, probably be a 10,000, 15,000 square foot office building, which would be able to generate enough funds to run an institution like a temple over perpetuity. Whether that translates or not, based on what I've heard yet, I don't know. Again, if the rules say no, then I guess obviously the answer is no, but I was not aware of it until this minute. Just to tell you a little more, I have lived in this valley for the last 25 years. I just calculated the other day that I've spent more time in Lancaster and the Antelope Valley than I did in the town that I was born and went all the way to medical school. So this is home. Now, my son has spent everything except a few months of his life in this valley, and it's very important for all of us to have a place of worship, and that's what this is all about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and apologize for the lateness of the information. However, I, I think you can appreciate that this is somewhat of a late application as well. So I think it is clear, at least from my understanding of staff, that the temple use on the particular property location as it currently is zoned is an allowable use with the approval of a conditional use permit, which this commission or a successive commission would, would hear and, and make a recommendation on. So you would not be precluded from doing that. However, if we acted on your proposal tonight and, over road staff and approved an office professional designation, you would not be able to build a temple. So we'll see where it ends up. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yeah, one quick comment is, it appears that there's a bit of a quandary, because Dr. Kumar is now talking about having some professional buildings there to create income for the temple. Mr. Ludeke, when you talked earlier, you alluded to needing more information about the use, so that we could get some clarity on this. Do you have all the information you need to let us know what uses can be done here with what you've talked about?
On, if it were to be redesignated to office professional, clearly the, the portion of the property designated as such could not be used for, for the temple. The, the issues that I think we would need to look at a little more clearly, an office professional designation does have a fairly limited number of uses that it allows, but it does allow things beyond an office professional or, or office use. It does include an allowance for restaurants. It does not permit fast food or drive-through type facilities. It allows certain kinds of retail, although very limited, bookstores and so forth. Given, given the location of this, you, you have right now, adjacent to these parcels, you have a, a park, city park, that's immediately north of them. You have a, a rural residential one-acre subdivision that is immediately to the east, and I believe there is a stub street that actually comes into this property from that. I, I think there would be some questions long-term about access and so forth. Even with the explanation, I would say that at this point, it's probably premature to request the, the office professional designation. There is not a defined project, so to speak, at that location on, on a fairly small site. It is an area that is largely rural residential. There are, however, churches that are within the immediate area. I can think of one that is already built and another that's under construction immediately north of Periclee High School. I would say that perhaps this is one of those situations where, as the plans become a little more defined, that we, we may want to go back and take another look at this through a general plan amendment or other process, particularly as far as access and, and other issues are concerned. So at this point, from staff's perspective, our recommendation would remain the same, that it remain in the rural residential or the rural category, with the understanding that the applicant does have the right to file a conditional use permit for the temple use, as well as ancillary uses that would go with that, classrooms and so forth.
One quick additional question is if the temple were to build a temple and then also build offices adjacent to the temple and lease those offices, would that be considered part of the temple?
I would say, that's a, that's a, that's a very difficult question. If it's, if they are being leased for general office purposes, I would say that it would be appropriate that that property be designated in some kind of commercial or office professional designation, or at least that portion of the property that's so involved. We do have that situation, I'm trying to remember, does Desert Vineyard lease out any of their office buildings to private concerns? Does anyone recall? I don't know. I'm not certain.
All right, any other comments or questions before we proceed with the next speaker? Mr. Ludeke? Ms. Kumar, welcome.
My husband actually said whatever needed to be said. I'm here just to support the same idea that if we could build a temple over there and also have an office building or some kind of, you know, structure which would offer some financial support to the temple for it to be feasible for us to build that temple. So I'm basically here for the same idea. I won't take more of your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Dr. G.L. Vajiani.
Dr. Vajiani, welcome.
Thank you. Chairman, boss, Vice Chair Smith, and members of the panel, thank you for giving me this time to talk about this project. Listening to all the comments, I'm completely baffled about the technicality of what we are asking and what you can grant. It's very similar, if you were to come to the Air Force Research Lab and I, I started talking about rockets, you'd be baffled. All we are asking here is your guidance and your leadership in, in ensuring that Dr. Kumar's project goes forward, whether it's application for land use changes or building a temple on that site. The fact is that there is a site available to build a temple, and Dr. Kumar has been very generous in providing this land. So what we are asking here is your guidance as to how we can go move forward. I heard a lot about denial of this land use business, you know, it's, the bottom line here is we want to build a temple, and that's it. And the other question that comes up is sustainability of this temple. Often, if you look at big projects down below, there is a requirement, and when you're going to put up this big structure, temple or a church, often the local council there is requiring you to bring in other structures around that main project so that it can be supported. And I think that's what Dr. Kumar was trying to do here, is to try to come up with a plan that the temple can be supported over a long time. So having said that, I think his, Dr. Kumar has been very generous in, in actually making a gesture of providing the land that he has owned for many years for the community, and for the panel, if you're not aware, the community, the Indian community in the Antelope Valley is quite substantial. If I, if I'm correct, there are more than 300 families here in the, in the valley. That is more than 1,000 people, and all these 1,000 people require a place to worship. And currently what happens is, many of them have to travel more than 100 miles to do this, beyond LAX. There are several temples around LAX and beyond that. So what we are asking here is your guidance...
If we were to say yes, we agree with you, you could not build a temple on that property.
Well, that's nice to hear. This is what we want. We want to feedback to exactly make sure.
So you could not build a temple on that property. If we leave it the way it currently is, then you have the opportunity, or Dr. Kumar has the opportunity, to work with the city staff to get the information as to what he needs to go ahead and apply through the proper steps. Tonight's not the night, because if we agreed with what you were requesting, that would preclude you from building a temple.
Maybe one suggestion I could make is, maybe in your recommendation, you can tell us the people to talk to the correct people so that we can get this thing moving.
Mr. Luticki?
Thank you.
And so I just want to make it clear, that by denial, we are not saying that we are not supporting, that that's not a decision we're making tonight, that we're not supporting you building a temple. By denying it, we are actually giving you the opportunity to move forward, to go through the proper channels to build the temple. If we were to agree with you and say, let's change that land use designation, you would not be able to build a temple. So we're actually helping you, okay, to move forward. Thank you.
Dr. Kumar, you called me at my office last week and asked to speak with me, and my assistant told you to call the city staff and talk to them. The reason was, I didn't know anything about your project. I hadn't received the information yet, and so I was uncomfortable speaking with you. But I urge you to talk to the staff of the city. They are more than willing to help you make this happen. We do need a Hindu temple in the Antelope Valley. I know that from my work with the hospital in trying to recruit new doctors coming to the Antelope Valley, because, you're right, that's the first question they ask, is where will we be able to worship? And they don't like the answer at the present time, and we're not able to recruit them to come here. So I congratulate you for your efforts to build the temple, and we all want to see it happen. But you just need to work with the staff and come up with a more secure plan, and then we'll be happy to consider it.
Have another speaker, Mr. Luticki?
Nina Suri.
Ms. Suri, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Nina Suri, and I'm teaching here at the Antelope Valley College. We moved here in the November of nineteen eighty-six. I raised my two children, and believe me, it's very hard to commute from here to LA. And because I want to give Indian culture to my children, so I was doing that every day, I mean, sorry, once a week or two times a week. And when I heard this, that Dr. Kumar is building the temple here, or he's planning to do that, and this, I'm really so excited to see this temple in that valley here. And we have more than three hundred families here, and we want to give our culture to the children. So this is a really great thing Dr. Kumar is doing, so I will really appreciate that a few people let him do this. Thank you, and there is nothing more to say.
All right, thank you for your comments. Have another speaker?
Latika Singh.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for giving me this opportunity to talk to you. My name is Latika Singh, and my husband is a physician at the Kaiser. We moved here about in nineteen ninety-seven, and I'm here for the same reason all these people before me talked to you, supporting Dr. Kumar to go ahead with his proposal. I don't want to repeat exactly what everybody else said, but listening to all of you, I have a couple of questions. You may think they are not very important, but for me, I need to understand, you're saying that conditional use of permit, is there any expiry, once you get that, or once you get, it's there forever? How does it work, the conditional use permit? How does that work?
We'll ask staff to respond to you. If you have another question, then we'll ask staff to respond.
Yeah, and secondly, you know, as Dr. Kumar is mentioning, he has two land parcels there. So is it possible, this is just my thought, okay, do one part for the temple with the conditional use, second part, we can use for the office, there are two separate parcels, I'm not very sure exactly how it works, maybe that can support. So it will not be one complete project, something like that can be done, maybe you can guide us, and it's very important to have that. You all know, before we started this meeting, we did pray, and we said, let's do good for this community to help us, God. So this is what we are doing for a whole Indian community, not only for Hindus, for all the Indians. We welcome everybody in the Hindu temple. So if you can help us, we'll really appreciate that. And maybe then you can answer my question about those two things, conditional use permit, how does that work?
All right. The simple explanation is, a church or temple on any land use, primarily any residential land use, some commercial land uses, some industrial land uses, is a permitted use with a conditional use permit. So it's not just your temple, it's anyone's place of worship. Must follow a application process with the city, through the city staff, there's forms to fill out, all sorts of processes, costs involved and so forth. You know, we're not going to explain the building of the watch tonight. We'll try to tell you what time it is, all right? What the members have said who have spoken tonight is that the land use you currently have, Dr. Kumar currently has on the property, allows the applicant to apply for the use of building a temple, as it sits today. Any other land use as proposed, office professional would not allow that.
I understand.
So no is yes, and yes is no.
I understand.
So, I don't know how much clearer I can be about it. You folks all have a right to speak and express your opinion and ask questions, but frankly, the technical aspects of the conditional use permit process are best directed to staff. Mr. Luticki and his staff would be more than happy to discuss these with you during the normal business hours here at the city, all right?
So there is one, so you get that permit, then you don't, it doesn't expire, it just stays?
No, they do expire. There's a statutory requirement. Currently, it's two years, I believe, with one extension, and we're going to consider next week a five-year time period for a conditional use permit. So we understand that it, from concept to completion, it takes a while, so...
Yes. So basically, every five years, you go on renewing that permit?
I beg pardon?
You go on renewing that conditional use permit every five years, when it's time to expire?
If it expires, you're obliged to refile, just like any other developer, right?
And we cannot do that, two land parcels, one for the thing and one for the office zone?
Well, as staff has pointed out, they believe that without a more defined plan, it's difficult to make a recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Another speaker, please?
Bharat Bat.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Smith, and the commissioners. Basically, we all here for the same purpose, and now, listening to everything happen, it looks like with conditional permit, we can allow to do this. And the committee is going to look into the two parcels that we have there, that Dr. Kumar has it. So basically, we just have to go forward, we are a big community here, and we'd like to see something happens for the future children. Our children are all in the college, so they didn't have a chance to do it, we have to go LA for that. So consider the request, and hopefully, we'll have something soon. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Have another speaker?
Vandana Vij.
Evening, welcome.
Mr. Chairman and the commissioners, my name is Vandana Vij, and I'm basically here to support Dr. Anil Kumar's idea about having a Hindu temple here. I just want to emphasize that a lot of us have our parents who live with us over here, and this is one thing they would like to see, because some of them are not, you know, in a state where we can take them to a temple outside of our city every weekend, and that's something they really look forward to, and they're constantly asking for rights from other people who are going to go to the temple to take them, because sometimes, we as parents are always stuck up with some activities for our kids. And in our culture, you know, I know I believe in it, that whenever there's something, you know, big happening in our lives, we would like to go to the temple and pray over there. There's a Sikh temple coming up, which is very good, we would go there also, but, you know, every time there's a sixteenth birthday, or, you know, we buy a car, buy a house, it is in our culture that we go and pray and give our thanks to the God. And it sometimes becomes really difficult to go, you know, down below and do this even during the weekdays. And we traditionally do our community service by, you know, cooking food for like two hundred people when we do our ceremonies in the temples down below. And so then, we have to leave early in the morning so we can go prepare the food and, you know, do everything. But if we had a temple here in the city, I think most of the community would involve themselves over there. And I will tell you, you know, we would like all our friends to share our get-togethers and our happiness, but it so happens that not even five percent can make it to our occasions, you know, because it's a long commute, and coming back, you know, in the middle of the night becomes a big commute too. So I would be happy if this could be considered, you know, for our parents too, and for the children to have their cultural life. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Another speaker?
Victor Vera.
Ms. Vera? Ms. Vera?
Yes, sir.
Just to address your comments to the commission on the general plan, thank you.
We have a property on Fiftieth West and Lancaster Boulevard. And we're building a hundred and sixty detached tank homes. The next week, a week from today, we're going to have a hearing here on our plan, and staff told us that they recommended to change the zone, and we're almost approved on our project, that's it.
Sir, if you wouldn't mind coming back, just want to clarify something for you. The recommendation of the general plan tonight, relative to any land use change, is general plan, not zoning, but general plan. And as it would affect a property that is currently under application with the city, the existing general plan is what we go by, not the future general plan, all right? So if you, as an applicant, have an active project, then your project would be considered under the current general plan.
Oh, thank you.
And it will, if you're talking about the project, conditional use permit and tentative track map on the northwest corner of, northeast corner of Lancaster Boulevard and Fiftieth Street West?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, that will, in fact, be heard next Monday night here at six P.M.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Jeff Little.
Evening, Jeff, and welcome.
Mr. Chairman, how are you? Commissioners, thank you.
I'm getting hoarse.
How are you? You look good, though. Healthy. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm here to address exactly what Victor was here just a few minutes ago, and you made some clarification on the buffer zone. We do have two tentative maps that have been submitted. One goes in front of your commission here next week. I believe that city staff is recommending approval of that tentative map. Our concern is the additional Phase Two, which we do have under application to the city, which we anticipate hopefully being heard soon on the agenda. My concern is one of the, in the buffer, is this going to affect us? I think you made it clear that we're in a position that if we've had the applications already submitted, we go by what our old designation would be. I think I spoke to you today, Mr. Chairman, you made that statement to me, too. I'm concerned, and there's a few other individuals in this buffer, is this going to affect everything down, even on future projects? So with the additional stuff that we are acquiring, or trying to acquire to make this project, will we be designated under the new general plan?
Is that your only question?
Yes, sir. I just want this, and our projects on file now.
In an attempt to answer it, assuming, of course, that the Planning Commission approves the map as presented, our Exhibit D, which in fact reflects the buffer on the east side of Fiftieth Street West from I to J, approximately thirteen hundred feet deep, that in fact would designate that non-urban residential, and then in the future time, zoning would apply. However, an active project would not be affected by that, a project currently on file. Now, the city council, we're recommending, we're a recommending body. The city council must ultimately adopt the general plan, and they may choose to make modifications. I wouldn't be surprised if they do. As it relates to this, I have no idea. So we're not the final word?
I'm just kind of concerned on the difference on the buffering, on the larger designation to the small, and I'm just kind of concerned about that, it doesn't seem. And looking at the prison across street to the west, is that considered any type of buffering whatsoever?
It may or may not be.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Jeff. Next speaker, please.
David Sinclair.
Mr. Sinclair.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Voss, Vice Chairman Smith, and members of the commission. I'm here speaking on behalf of AV Land tonight. They have an application in for, or a request, I should say, for changing the land use designation at Seventieth West and J, and then another one at Seventieth West and K. It's item number B four and C three in your list of requests. And I just want to say that, as a member of the GPAC, it was, I think, most of the members on that committee agreed that we should have a balanced mix of land uses throughout the city. And I think there was also a general frustration among the members of that committee, as well as, I think, in the community in general, of the way the city has been developed thus far. And it seems like that we kind of plan as we go, instead of looking into the future and planning ahead. And I know all of you are aware of the issues that we're dealing with on the Sixtieth West corridor, the fact that those properties were not designated...
However, an active project would not be affected by that, a project currently on file. Now, the city council, we're recommending, we're a recommending body. The city council must ultimately adopt the general plan, and they may choose to make modifications. I wouldn't be surprised if they do. As it relates to this, I have no idea. So we're not the final word?
I was, I'm just kind of concerned on the difference on the buffering, on the larger designation to the small, and I'm just kind of concerned about that. It doesn't seem, and looking at the, at the prison across street to the west, is that considered any type of buffering whatsoever?
It may or may not be.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Jeff. Next speaker, please.
David Sinclair.
Mr. Sinclair.
Good evening, Chairman Vos, Vice Chairman Smith, and members of the commission. I'm here speaking on behalf of AV Land tonight. They have an application in for, or a request, I should say, for changing the land use designation at 70th West and J, and then another one at 70th West and K. It's item number B4 and C3 in your list of requests. And I just want to say that as a member of the G-PAC, it was, I think most of the members on that committee agreed that we should have a balanced mix of land uses throughout the city. And I think there was also a general frustration among the members of that committee, as well as, I think, in the community in general, of the way the city has been developed thus far. And it seems like that we kind of plan as we go instead of looking into the future and planning ahead. And I know all of you are aware of the issues that we're dealing with on the 60th West corridor, the fact that those properties were not designated commercial in the past, and now we're trying to get some of those properties designated commercial. And we just want to avoid having that kind of thing happen in the future. I think that we're looking at the general plan 2030. That's 21 years out. I think we need to be forward-thinking and look out and say, okay, look, if we're putting commercial at almost every major intersection in the city, you know, you go along Avenue L. from 10th, 20th, 30th, 40th, they're commercial at all of those intersections. And the same thing if you go down K. and J., going east and west. And I think that we need to, in order to avoid having a problem like we're having now on 60th Street West, where people have, you know, come in and said, you know, well, you know, we moved out there because we thought it was not going to be any commercial. I think that we need to plan ahead and say, okay, look, if we're going to be, development's going to happen. You know, people continue to move out here. We need to plan ahead for that, give notice to people as they're moving out that, you know, someday this is going to be commercial here. We can avoid a lot of headaches. And so I've just suggested you would recommend approval of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sinclair. Go ahead.
Item B4 says last updated 4/13/2009. It says support request under B4. C3 actually says deny, but B4 says support, so like some clarification. What is it? Oh, the B. I see. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Smith cleared it up for me.
Okay. We're good. Next speaker, please, unless someone has another question.
I just would like to just make a comment is, one thing, I know, Mr. Sinclair, you mentioned that it'd be nice to plan so people know. I think one challenge that I would have would be is if there's already residents there. I think we'd want to give those residents an opportunity to hear their voice prior to changing to something to commercial rather than just changing it and allowing a development to go in when they didn't know it was going to go in. So that would really be my only challenge is if there was residential population adjacent to something like this. Now, if there was a property owner and developer that had these lots and there was no residents, I wouldn't have a challenge with changing them to commercial.
And I think...
On crack, is it like these doors or the anti- door or something, right?
Yeah. On these two particular lots, I don't know of any residences around it. Correct me if I'm wrong. I haven't gone out and done a viewing of these two.
You addressing your question to staff?
Yes, staff, as far as the location of 70th... Yeah, 70th and Avenue J. West. What's adjacent to that lot, please?
I believe that's largely vacant.
Is it urban or non-urban?
The area, the area of the request is designated on the existing general plan as non-urban and is on the plan currently, the planning commission's plan as non-urban.
Okay, and can I ask the same question of 70th West and Avenue K. Adjacent lots to that, please?
I believe the only development near that is the cemetery, which is a little ways to the south of that. I know that as you go a little bit west from there, there are some scattered residences, but I don't believe there's anything immediately adjacent to that site. It is designated on the current general plan as non-urban.
There are a few resident, I mean, there's just little houses, kind of...
Some scattered.
Six or seven between K. and I., I believe. Not a lot along the west side.
Gotcha.
And I have to make a comment, too, because I think that Mr. Sinclair does bring up a good point about the fact that, looking at those areas, people knowing, I mean, if there is future development out there, people would know that that is zoned a certain way and would avoid a lot of kind of controversy as we're dealing with right now. And that's not to say that that would necessarily ever be developed, but if the need arose to have that designated.
I think practically, however, most, if not all, commercial projects require a conditional use permit. So if you anticipate not having public input on a proposed project, whether it's zoned now or a conditional use permit or a general plan revision or a zone change in the future, we would expect to have the same kinds of hearing and oversight, so. But whatever you all want to do is entirely up to you, but...
I understand that point completely. I think that if I were buying property and wanted to live in an area that did not have commercial development, I would look at the general plan and see where there was no commercial zoning. And so if we have a developer that owns property with no residents around it and would like to zone it commercial now to avoid that confusion and what we're running into in other areas, I would actually support that.
Have another speaker?
If I mispronounce this, I apologize. Lisa Volbal?
I'm here tonight to discuss Hillview Homes owns 10 acres at the northwest corner of 30th Street East and J. 8, and we'd like to zone part of that for commercial. And I'm here because I know that the planners have recommended that we keep that residential, and there's 37 lots currently set up there. And I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding. We just want to turn one of the corners into commercial and leave the remaining lots. So what we're trying to do is turn the 10 corner, the 10 lots on the southeast corner, we're trying to change those into commercial. And I know that there was a concern about the streets that we were going to put in when we put in the lots, and those streets would not be affected. We would still be putting those streets in. And one of the streets would actually be improved because, I wish I had a map to show you, but the way the cul-de-sac is, is it loops down into an L., and it would shorten it, so it'd be a smaller cul-de-sac, so it'd be better for the fire department. And I know there was another concern that they want to put commercial property at 30th and J., but we believe that 30th Street is large enough to sustain having another small commercial outlet, and a small neighborhood grocery store or restaurant would be a great place for citizens to walk. It'd be a half mile closer to them. And that's about all I have to say, if there's any questions.
The letter you wrote on April 29th that we have a copy of...
Uh-huh.
...defines the entire parcel as the request.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not mean it to be like that.
Pardon?
I did not mean it to be like that. I have a map if you'd like to see it of what we are actually...
If you have enough copies for the commission, that's fine.
I only have one ex...
Otherwise, we'll consider what's before us.
I know, I only have one extra copy, but I can hand that over to...
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this person actually has two cards indicating, representing two different people, but I would assume that he could deal with both of them at the same time. Jim Gilli.
Welcome, Mr. Gilli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission appreciate the opportunity to be here. Does that mean I get six minutes, or am I still stuck at 3:00 A.M.? But that's okay. I actually...
We'll let you speak on one project at a time and allow you three minutes each, if that's your pleasure.
Thank you. Hopefully, it won't take that long.
All right, thank you.
The first applicant, or the first request is from an applicant, actually Benjamin Dew, his family and the Farugi family, that have owned 120 acres of property on the west side of town for many, many, many years. And they did it as a future investment opportunity. It's 120 acres of land. It's a very large piece of property, but it is in the outlying area. And they recognize that in order for that property to be put to some beneficial use in the future, not necessarily the very near term, but in the future, it will require probably a major land use planning effort, which is more appropriate for a specific plan designation. And that is their request, to be able to spend the time, the energy, and the resources with your staff to do a specific plan process out there. Recognize that you are already, in what you have before you, going to go that far west currently if you support your earlier action for Lancaster Highlands, the specific plan that's requested between L. and M. So they know that you're going to be looking at that entire region, and they would like to have the opportunity to participate with you in that regard. So it is not a request for a density change. At this point, we are talking about allowing them to get into the planning process with you and your staff. So that's the first request. The second request is...
Excuse me. Before you proceed, I just want to clarify and see if staff has a comment so we can deal with one issue at a time, if you don't mind.
Okay. Sure.
The land use designation is non-urban for that area, and it was, it's currently non-urban and it's proposed to be non-urban. Is that correct, Mr. Ludic?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do you have any comments on the proposed change to a specific plan designation?
I guess the only thing that I would add to it, I mean, from one standpoint, I don't care if they want to request a specific plan overlay on the site, you know, fully recognizing that they can't do anything without the preparation of a specific plan. I don't know that I object to that. The only thing that I would add, I think we ought to be very clear that this does not constitute endorsement of an increase in density. I think that that begins to compromise some of the basic principles on which the general plan effort is based. That would be my only comment. But from a purely standpoint, do I have an objection to a specific plan overlay on it? No.
All right. Anything from the members? Okay. Please proceed with your next question.
Thank you. The second item is really a review of an action that you took back in March, and it, if you'll reference the item C4B, I now represent Infinity 26, the owners of the property. And I think, if you will recall, the discussion that occurred at that time and on your log, it reflects a staff recommendation for denial indicating that it was abutting a very large lot residential area out there. And I think what you have, and I've submitted to you a new revised map to show that in fact, the application, although it was for 20 acres at that point, we have a revision for just under 11 acres, which enables the commercial property to be buffered by an existing tentative map designation for 7,000 square foot lots. So in fact, this revised request, in our opinion, reflects the sort of the overall bias of your general plan planning to have these commercial designations within reasonable proximity to existing and clearly very near-term residential development in order to allow for ease of access, perhaps the opportunity for biking, walking, as well as reducing the amount of vehicular distances that have to be traveled to get the support, commercial support that those residences need. And so, and it also maintains the traditional planning orientation that Lancaster has had whereby we try to buffer commercial with higher density residential as opposed to lower density residential. So that has been a fairly consistent theme over the last 30 years in the city as well. And I think part of the deficiency in the original request was they didn't, the applicant just hadn't thought through how you make a commercial designation at that location fit with sort of the normal course of planning that Lancaster does. And by having the, our 7,000 square foot buffer around the property, although we firmly believe that 20-acre commercial site could also work, and we could still have the 7,000 square foot buffer, that could happen. The plan that we have shown you tonight shows an 11-acre commercial designation. So we would request your support for that.
All right. Thank you. Isn't there a...
I'm not talking. I'm not talking.
We've got a runaway beeper here. The total parcel has, currently has a tentative tract map overlay on it now.
Correct.
So this document that you shared with us then takes that into consideration on some sort of a design or redesign and proposes a roughly 10 and 1/2 acre commercial use oriented to Avenue K.
Correct.
So that's what you're...
And again, the ability to orient, the ability to orient it to 40th is there. The civil engineer is prepared to show that design as well, if that were more acceptable, you know, to, we have the physical capability, and he's indicated we have the engineering capability to orient it in either fashion, and we can go from the 10 and 1/2 to the original 20 as well. I just don't think they, I don't think the applicant gave you enough information the first go-round in order to make that possible.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
Have another speaker, Mr. Ludic.
Dan Stitt.
Mr. Stitt. How's the engineering business, Dan? Pretty good?
Tough, tough, like everything else right now.
Like all of us. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to speak also on the stuff at 50th and along 50th between Lancaster and Avenue I. I was the engineer on the two projects that Jeff Little spoke of and Victor Vera that are already in process, but I would suggest it would be beneficial to accept the preferred plan in that area because these two projects are moving forward, and that only leaves an isolated area to the north of it that would be rural residential because there's also a channel proposed south of I. between these projects and I. So you would have kind of an isolated island in there. But it was good to hear that we are still processing under the existing general plan, so I think that cleared up a lot of our questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Another speaker, please?
Athena Boyer.
Ms. Boyer, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Athena. I'm with Royal Investors Group, and we currently have one of the pieces that is next to the buffer zone on 50th Street West that Dan just went over. And, sorry, I got up too fast. The only issue that I have really is that the, if you adopt this new proposed land use designation of, I think it's two per acre, R20 is at the urban rural residential zoning.
Simply indicated as non-urban.
Non-urban. It's in very close proximity, actually adjacent to this higher density, which is now going to be coming before you next Monday, I believe. So I'm not completely in opposition to some sort of buffer, but maybe a smoother transition would be something more appealing to a developer or builder in the future, not going from... These are like 4,000 and 5,000 square foot, single-family detached, being proposed on these two developments that are right in that area, and they're going to be directly next to R20s, basically. So it's a very big jump from what is going to be existing to what is being proposed. Does that make sense? So basically, just it might be smart to go back and look at, in the future, in the grand scheme of things, how things are going to connect to what is actually going to be built out there because the 160 lots are going to... It's going to be very close together, kind of like master plan with... I don't feel like I'm making sense here. It's just a huge transition from 5,000 square foot lots to 20s, and it might be good to do something in between the buffer, buffered out to where it's not so... Such a big jump.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for your comments. And if further speakers?
I have no more cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right. It's now 8:30. Going once. Anyone wish to fill out a card and speak? This may be your last opportunity on the general plan before this body. Maybe not. Who knows? No one else? All right. It's appropriate then to close the public hearing without objection. Okay. Before us then, tonight, after we've heard from the speakers, as been our practice in the past, we have gone through the general plan document just to make sure everyone is comfortable with every section and every recommendation. We've only got five or six tabs to go through here, and we'll make it quick. The first tab was the staff report, and we've heard that. Anybody have any questions or comments about the staff report tonight? All right. Number two is the amendment to the general plan policy document, which is an exhibit to the resolution which you have before you. Any questions about that? Comments? That's Exhibit C. Everybody comfortable with that? Don't hear anything? Tab four, we've already dealt with. Tab five is the log of the proposed recommendations, which we've considered, other than the... If I was counting correctly, the five requests we've heard tonight. So I'd like to take up each one and make sure we have consensus on it or a discussion of each proposal that has been before us. I think the first one was B4, I believe. Wasn't it? That be correct?
Yes.
All right. Anybody got anything to say about it?
I do. I agree. I think the purpose of the general plan is to forecast, and I do believe it will clear up a lot of controversy and actually create some transparency if we do identify a commercial sooner, rather than later.
I addition to the... Commissioner Irvin, I would like to support that because we won't have to run the same problem again, so I support that.
Okay. Anyone else care to speak on that?
Same thing. I'm in agreement. And again, just looking at this to try to set a pattern is that there are no residences around this particular lot. Therefore, we're not changing anything on anybody that moved out there to begin with.
Okay. So the last time we heard this, the commission's feeling was to deny the commercial designation. So if I hear the consensus, it is to approve it tonight rather than deny it? Would that be what I'm hearing? From everyone?
Yeah. Just in reading this, I try to recall the meeting where we even discussed this because we've had so many. But I think back to, you know, instead of thinking in the short term, and we really have to kind of project way out, and so I would support changing that map.
All right. Without objection, then, the modification would be to support rather than deny on B4. Is that what I've heard? Okay. All right. The next item is B7A, which was the desert vineyard church proposal for light industrial. Staff had agreed with that. Anybody have any objection to that recommendation?
No.
Okay. Well, the next one was C9A, Charlie 9A. Pardon?
Speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped over. Beg your pardon. Yes, yes, yes.
Somebody's asking.
I don't know. C3. What did I do? A sketch. Ah, there it is. No, I've got that. I just... I'm just looking for the letter. C3O, this is the southwest corner of 70th, Western J. And that was staff's recommendation of a denial. The request was to modify staff's recommendation. What's your pleasure?
I would also like to approve this request as well. I know that the last recommendation was to deny, but the same argument I had before as far as forecasting, I think it's important that we do that in a general plan.
I would like some clarification on this one since, again, we have heard so many different things as to the reason this one was denied, and the one north to it was supported.
South of it.
South of it. I'm sorry.
Staff's support of the original request at K and 70th was predicated on the fact that it was a little more central to what we looked at as the urbanizing area for the next 20 years. This site, if you look at the urbanizing pattern, there is no... There's nothing but non-urban designated north of Avenue J in that area. There is nothing designated for urban use west of it. It essentially sits at the corner of where that long-term, more dense growth pattern is shown. We didn't feel that it made a lot of sense in the framework that we're looking at in the general plan. If there is a desire, quite frankly, to put a designation at that corner, I would suggest that you consider the southeast corner rather than the southwest.
Any other comments from anyone or questions? So we have a request from Mr. Irvin to designate C3 as commercials, approximately 20 acres surrounded by non-urban use on the north and west, plus non-city jurisdictions. So do we have any support for that?
Yes. I do support it. Again, we have a developer that owns the property. We have no other residences around the area, so the choice is to change it to commercial now or look at it when it's project time, and then you may have residences involved.
Anyone else?
Well, I'd like to know why the staff has a reason for supporting the other corner over this particular one.
All right. I think Mr. Ludic pointed out that it was more central to the urban area on the west side as opposed to this site being north and west of the city boundary, really.
Commissioner Haycock, are you referring to the reason for the southeast corner versus the southwest?
Yeah, your previous comment.
Yeah, certainly. And for that, I need to kind of go back, and I don't know if anyone has it. I'm going a little bit from memory. If you go back to the approval recommendation that we made on Avenue K and 70th West, that... There's a reference to a letter that staff wrote in November to that particular request store. And we indicated that our support of the corner at K and 70th was predicated... We recognize that that would be essentially jumping, if you will, what we recognize as kind of the area of the... Or the, you know, the urbanizing area line that runs along 70th. We said that, given the fact that you had more urban development proposed in that general area, that we would support commercial, with the understanding that we did not view it as any kind of a precedent being set for further westward extension of urban residential. My comment on the one at J and 70th would be this. Number one, if you designate the southeast corner, which is currently held as one single parcel of 160 acres, that you would retain that commercial designation within the defined urbanizing area as depicted on the plan. If you feel that the southwest corner is okay, staff's comment would contain the same caveat that we had a mile further south. I am, from a planning director's standpoint, just stating that I am very concerned about any kind of effort to sort of jump the urbanizing area line prematurely. Not that in the future it wouldn't make sense, but I would ask if you're looking at commercial at that location, I assume that you're looking very far down the line, and that it doesn't necessarily predicate or justify at this point a whole-scale westward expansion of the urban area of the city. Is that... And that's what my concern would be in terms of your approach.
And I would be more...
That's probably a very long answer to your question.
Well, I appreciate it. I'd be more inclined to follow the staff recommendation in a situation like this, which, as you say, is based a lot on what's going to happen in the future, and who knows what will happen in the future. But why do we have planners if we don't listen to them?
Well said, Commissioner Haycock. However, I do not... I see this, the general plan, as definitely forward-looking, and my disagreement is only due to the fact that what we're facing recently is possibly major development on 60th Street corridor, and it's coming, you know, kind of controversially, and I want to prevent that in the future. So me, I'm still for it, but yeah, I guess it's up to... We're democratic here. So that's your pleasure.
What we heard for and against, I guess we're going to have to poll the members to see if we have a consensus of support for Mr. Irvin's proposal to override staff's condition or recommendation on C3 and revise it to revise the 20-acre parcel to commercial in the southwest corner. If you agree with that, say so, please. You do? You do? That's two.
I agree.
You agree?
That's four, Mr. Irvin.
That's four? No? Four to three. So it carries. The next one, if I have it correct, is C9A, which was the request from Hillview Homes to designate C4B. C4B.
C4B.
Oh, okay. That was not defined on my sheet. That's...
That's one, Jim.
Somebody's robbed my map up here. I'm sorry.
He accused me, and I don't have the map.
I've actually lost something. Holy Toledo.
Jim, I would like to get a staff review of recommendation.
It's the plat map that was provided to us earlier today, this evening, on the northwest corner of 40th Street West and K. All right? Look, I know what it is. I just didn't have it marked. As C4. So the original request and staff's recommendation was to deny. We considered it a couple of times. We've had another request this evening to approve approximately 10 and 1/2 acres on that corner. So you'd like to hear what staff has to say about it, Jonathan?
I would.
All right.
Currently on the general plan and is a commercial center or commercial site of approximately 12 acres at the southwest corner of K and 30th Street East, contained on the proposed general plan, recommendation for the commission is additional 10 acres one mile north of that. From staff's perspective, while we certainly have, you know, listened to a number of people and heard from residents who would like to encourage additional commercial on the east side, I'm not certain that three 10-acre or slightly larger parcels within a one-mile stretch on that side of 30th Street East is appropriate.
You're addressing the next item with the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I get the wrong one?
And that's fine. We'll get to that. It's C4B is what I think Mr. Irvin had a question about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which was 40th West and K Northwest corner. And I found my plat. Shoved it in the agenda.
I apologize, but I had the other one really worked out in my answer.
It's okay. It's a long evening.
This one, I'll tell you, is a bit of a difficult one for staff, and I'm afraid when I get done, I may not give you a clear answer. Let me start by saying this. The area that is bounded by J, K, 40th West, and 50th West, I think is a striking example of what we do not want to do in the future. It is almost nothing but an endless string of housing tracks connected together in odd ways with, I believe, a school, and I'm not sure if anything else is in there but a water tank, if I recall correctly. So in the sense that the request puts into that area some commercial use, I think that has some merit that ought to be considered. I think one of the things that we would be somewhat concerned about here is we tried to look at providing adequate commercial sites around this general square mile, none of them ending up inside of it. One at the northwest corner of J and 40th West, which is shown on the recommended plan. Another one at the southwest corner, I believe, of 50th West and Avenue J, which once again serves this. And, you know, as you look at those two areas, particularly the one at J and 40th, and then you look at the fact that there is a commercial center already in existence at 40th West and Avenue L, and additional 10 acres or so recommended at the southeast corner of that same intersection, and you start looking at the land use pattern in that general area. Now, a large part of it is the county, but... Now, a large part of it is the county, but you have kind of an urban, somewhat urban, broken by the prime desert woodland area on three sides, and a very non-urban area on the fourth quadrant. I'm not certain, given that, that this would be the appropriate location for commercial, particularly because you already have one at, two sites at Fortieth and L, as well as a proposed site, you know, up at Fortieth and J, which seems, you know, taking only into account the urban residential land use pattern, seems more central. That would be my initial impression. However, you know, I once again reiterate that, you know, maybe it wouldn't be worthwhile to look at commercial, you know, in terms of providing some variety in a square mile that certainly doesn't have a lot of diversity in it. I will give you a little bit of history on this. This particular area, Mr. Irvin has expressed some concerns about neighborhood reactions. I guarantee you that you will have one here, because we have had them in the past.
So, it's your pleasure, folks. Any further questions or comments?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Just one more clarification. As far as the reason for denying the request, properties adjoining one-acre rural lots on the west, that's no longer an issue, or is that...
Oh, I think that's still an issue. With no, meaning no negative comment to the person who prepared this map, it doesn't work. It would have to be reconsidered in terms of the way that we approach it. It doesn't incorporate into it the way that we would normally transition from that more rural area to the west eastward, which would be to front lots of wider frontages along that street. So, it would have to be rethought in that regard, but, you know...
Does that have anything to do with redesignating that land use at this point, or is that when the project comes down the line?
You know, the thing that I think makes this one a little tricky, and, you know, for those of, I may call upon those of you with real estate experience and, you know, commercial expertise to kind of comment on this. You know, it seems that K is probably the optimum street to front this, to front any kind of commercial on at this location. Unfortunately, by doing that, it gets you closer and closer to that area of one-acre lots that's to the west. Particularly if you want to look at doing a larger parcel than 10 acres, you're almost gonna have to run from what would be 42nd to 40th. You know? And those lots don't back up to 42nd, they front 42nd, those houses do. So, you are, regardless of the configuration that you use here, going to have an issue with how you interface development on the west side of this overall parcel. And that, I can tell you from previous experience, because there has been a map that's gone through the process on here, that has been an issue also with those residents.
Just the tentative track?
Yes.
Normal...
Yeah, yeah, no, commercial wasn't even thought of in that regard.
Normal routine, R7,000 map.
There has been a previous commercial request in the city's experience at this intersection. It happened to be at the southwest corner. The reaction was so strong, the city council turned it down. In fact, I think the applicant withdrew it.
Well, I think Mr. Gillies spoke eloquently in a last-ditch effort. However, my opinion is that we stay with the staff and deny the request due to the fact that they said it doesn't fit. If it does not fit in the general plan, obviously, I'm not gonna go at odds with the staff at this point.
Anyone else?
My feelings on this particular lot is that it differs with the other ones in that there are many residences around it. I think that we need to allow the process to not pull the rug out from underneath those residences, but allow them to have a voice in this process. I'm not against the project. I would just want to have the neighborhood have the ability to have their voice heard.
Anyone else? We have to, are we polling again? Do we have a difference of opinion? I guess would be, what I hear is a couple of noes on this side, and maybe yes on this side, or two yeses maybe? I don't know. Let me hear what you have to say, folks. No, no?
No.
No, no? I'll wait. Yes, yes, yes. You and me, kid?
I'm just thinking still about that, those houses.
Well, while you guys are thinking, I'll offer a comment. If I was selecting commercial sites, I would find this more attractive, this site more attractive on Fortieth and K than I would at Fortieth and J, or Fortieth and I for that matter, the way the current general plan is, based on what I believe to be the growth pattern of the community and the likelihood of build-out in the 10-year life of this general plan. Obviously, it's a 20-30 plan, but it gets looked at about every 10 years. Isn't that right, Mr. Ludick?
Yeah, somewhere between five and 10 years, usually.
Right. So, five to 10 years from now, about, you know, once the housing bottom hits and rejuvenation of the residential development takes place, we're likely to be right in the throes of a revision of the general plan again. A commission will be. I use the "we" in the royal sense. So, I would be inclined to support a commercial designation in this quadrant. However, the concern I have is the lateness of the application and it, or of the request, wherein the overall community does not really have an opportunity to even comment on it because of, you know, but we are in public session, we are, have considered public comment. I mean, it's a duly-nosed meeting and all the rest of it. But personally, I would say that this location would be an excellent commercial location and conform to the tenants of the proposed general plan in the urbanizing area, wherein I don't believe, you know, I'd be willing to trade off one of those other intersections, frankly, and support commercial on this corner if I could get some agreement. I don't know which one that would be. Maybe we want to talk about, maybe we don't, I don't know.
Well, for me, you have agreement. I think that's an excellent lot for a commercial project. I just think that the neighborhood has a right to be involved in the process, and this is not allowing them to be involved. That's the challenge I have with it.
Additionally, due to the lateness of getting the documentation, I think staff, we have excellent staff, them giving the opportunity, I think they could make this work. However, at this time, I would not support it.
Okay. Have a comment yet?
Well, although I do have a couple of concerns, I do agree that it's a great location for a commercial development, and I would go ahead and support it.
So, I have one, two, yes. I couldn't read. Okay, I better keep score here, I'm sorry. Dan, yes? Raj, yes, okay. All right, so it's a consensus of supporting the commercial as proposed at the northwest corner.
Okay.
Approximately 10 acres.
Okay.
And I would leave it, if I can state the commission's position, that its orientation, whether it's to Fortieth or to K, would yet to be determined. I don't know that it's necessary to make that determination under the general plan, is it?
Um, yeah, it probably should.
Okay. So, oriented to K or to Fortieth? It's proposed to be at K. I'm starting at this end this time. Yes, no? Orienting, as proposed, is that, you satisfied with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's the deal so far? Fortieth or K?
No, it's oriented to K.
Okay. Yeah. K.
Okay. All right. Okay, leave it the way it is.
Okay, approximately as diagrammed, as far as location?
Approximately, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is, if my, is C9A, so you can tell us again about that site, Mr. Ludick.
I had it so worked out once. I think my point was that, is that between, right now, you have a commercial site that's already designated at the southwest corner of K and 30th East, that's approximately 12 or 13 acres. You have a proposed commercial site designated at the northwest corner of J and 30th East, at 10 acres, and in fact, there, I think there was some discussion because there's, you know, the way that configuration is, that's theoretically expandable, although 10 is what the commission at this point has recommended. And if you were to add this, you would end up with three 10-acre or thereabout sites within a mile of each other on that west side of 30th Street East. I, there are circumstances where I think putting commercial at the intersection of a secondary road makes some sense, particularly if it's got some neighborhood-serving values to it. But given the growth pattern on the east side, I wouldn't recommend that you put it at there when you have adequate sites available a half-mile north and south of this particular location. I would keep it on the major streets.
And then, just a reminder to us all that previously, we considered the northeast and southeast corner of this intersection, and decided that we should not designate them commercial, so, just as a reminder of our previous discussions. So, anyone have a burning desire to modify the staff's recommendation and support the applicant's letter and the speaker that spoke before us? Anyone? I hear none, so the staff recommendation would stand. C15, C15B, which was the northeast corner of 30th Street West and Avenue M, Challenger? Is it M on that side of the street, or Challenger?
I think we still refer to it as Avenue M, although perhaps it's...
Okay.
I don't know what the county calls it.
Okay, so, we heard a number of speakers in, and we don't have a recommendation from staff, do we? Or, yes, we do, I'm sorry. Beg your pardon. So, anyone want to talk about the request to modify this to office professional?
No, I think we had that discussion earlier, and I think, just to clarify, that by denying this request, we're allowing you to move forward on requesting what you need to request. So, it's a good thing.
All right, anyone else? Any other comments from anyone?
I think it's 7-0 that we want you to build the temple.
That's right. All right. That may be all. I believe that is all. What? The last one was the 120 acres, assessed or parcel numbers 3267, 011, parcels two and three, at approximately 105th West and Avenue J. We don't have a designation on this, and you gave a brief comment previously. Do you care to add to that?
No, I think, once again, I don't have an objection to the SP designation. I do have concerns that it not be interpreted as an endorsement of a discontinuous urban density area.
So, is there a challenge with the isolation of a specific plan and not really connect it to anything, or is that problematic?
No, not at a rural density in that area. I think it does become problematic if it starts getting up to an urban-type density. I think we've seen those issues in Westview Estates and Del Sur Ranch, and I don't think we want to replicate those problems.
So, the staff's position is neutral, or support or deny?
The staff's position is it doesn't object to the SP designation.
Okay, good.
Can I ask, I need to be educated, what exactly happens if we change it from what it is now, non-urban residential, correct, to SP? What does it allow the...
It does nothing to change the land use density.
What does it do?
What it does is it requires that before any subdivision or development of the parcel could take place, a specific plan would have to be prepared and adopted in accordance with state law. Staff has been really hesitant to place SP designations in areas unless they are at the specific request of the landowner, because the requirements can be somewhat onerous. To give you a little bit of background and history, back in 1992, the city adopted a general plan, which, you know, outside of a number of other problems, created really far-flung urban residential designations. I think we've gone over that in the history that we went through with you. In order to get some sort of control over that, the city also adopted SP overlays on a great deal of these outlying lands. It's great from the standpoint of if you want to control development, but what we found is that none of these properties, by and large, weren't ready to be developed, but it started creating real problems when you had people who, you know, they owned 40 acres and they wanted to build their own house, or they wanted to do something of this type, because the SP designation set up, you don't have a specific plan adopted. We ultimately had to go in and provide a few little outs so that we didn't, you know, create situations where people asking to do things that were essentially consistent with the intent of what we had were not prohibited. All I'm saying is that if you apply an SP overlay, you basically put that property owner in the position of not being able to move forward on any kind of activity without having a specific plan adopted for it. Now, if that landowner is willing to accept that, I don't have any objection to the designation.
So, typically, it's a full environmental impact report?
Yes.
At the very least, so...
Yes. Yeah, if you look at...
If everybody's moving fast, it's a year-and-a-half process to get to a commission to be considered for approval.
Yeah, specific plan is essentially what the city did for the Amargosa Creek project, what it did for the downtown area, what it did for the Foxfield area, you know, and those were all city-initiated. This, I would assume, would not be a city-initiated action, this would come from a private party.
Thanks for the clarification. I'm fine with it, as long as the owner still understands what they're getting into and they're fine with it.
I'd have to agree with that assessment.
Okay. Everyone? Okay, the consensus is then to support the applicant's request. So, we are at the end of all the requests, so we have Exhibit D before us with the modifications that we've discussed this evening, and I want to make sure... and I want to make sure that staff understands our position and what the recommendation would be. So, the assumption that I have is that Exhibit D would be modified and attached to the resolution should we choose to adopt it. Would that be what you're going to do?
Yes, that would be the appropriate action. Just by way of reference as to where this all goes, the recommendation that will go forth from this body to the city council will be your recommendation as you adopt it.
Okay, so, basically, the staff report that's before us and the resolutions and the mitigation monitoring program and the Exhibit D modified, based on our discussion and consensus tonight, would be what we are going to potentially act on and would be forwarded to the city council.
Correct.
Okay, so make sure everybody's clear on what we're doing. So, are there any other questions or comments from the members about anything we're doing here? Okay, a motion then would be in order, based on the recommendations before us.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolutions Number 09-12, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Lancaster, California, recommending to the city council certification of the final environmental impact report and master environmental assessment. The adoption of the environmental findings, the adoption of a statement of overriding considerations, adoption of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and adoption of the general plan update that encompasses the entire city.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Smith and seconded by Mr. Irvin. So, any further discussion, comment? Please vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Congratulations. Thank you all for your patience. Director's announcements, Mr. Ludiki?
I guess we have no more special meetings on the planning, on the general plan to schedule. We do have our regular meeting next Monday. I do not know yet when the general plan will be in front of the city council. That is yet to be determined by them, but as soon as that is set, we will let you know.
All right. And then, just as a reminder, once this, assuming the city council makes its determination and adoption in the near future, then you will be scheduling and we will begin working on the zone changes in support of the modifications to the general plan, right?
That is correct.
And do you think we'll be having special meetings to do that?
Well, that's a good question. You know, I guess we'll see how that goes.
Committed to the city on Monday nights, I mean, that's, isn't everyone sure? It's our life.
I, one other thing I'd like to add, Mr. Chairman, and you touched on it briefly. I'd once again like to thank Dave Ledbetter. This is a person who really retired almost a year ago and was willing to come back on a part-time basis to do nothing but act as the project manager for the general plan update. And unfortunately, this is his last real action in that. But I, he has done three of these now and I think this has been, you know, all things considered, one of the smoothest and well-thought-out processes. And I'd just like to give him a round of applause. I think he's done really well.
What a guy. Tremendous work and we really appreciate it.
Dave, you want to come back every Monday evening? Just for fun?
Do you really want me in the audience? Certainly. Certainly. All right. So, anything from the commission? Just a reminder, we do, we are going to adjourn tonight till 6:00 PM, May 18th, for the regular planning commission meeting. So, anything else before us? All right, at approximately 9:15, this meeting is adjourned till Monday, May 18th, 2009, at 6:00 PM in these chambers. Thank you all.